At this time, I call the May twelfth regular meeting of the County Commission to order. We're honored to have with us tonight Ms. Naomi Cobb of the New Tappanacle Baptist Church in the north end of Lincoln County to come and give us our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance of the Flag led by Commissioner Larry Collins. Ms. Naomi Cobb.
First giving honor to my heavenly Father, who woke all of us this morning. To the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, I ask permission, following the invocation, that the Vice President of the Food Pantry can just give a few minutes of gratitude or thanks. Do I have your permission?
Thanks ma'am.
Thank you. Let's go to the Throne of Grace. To Commissioner Walker Norman, the Board of Commissioners, all in attendance, and particularly the volunteers from Lincoln County Food Pantry, let's go to the Throne of Grace. Most gracious and heavenly Father, on this, May the twelfth, 2022, God, we're pausing in agreement, just to say thank you. God, and on this evening, we're lifting up everyone that's in here today. You said in your word that whatever's bound on earth will be bound in heaven, and that's Matthew eighteen and eighteen, and then you told us, we should pray for our people in authority. Those are the kings, the ones that we've elected to position, so that, and then you told us why we should do that, Lord. You said so that we could lead a quiet and peaceful life. That's First Timothy two two. I will seal this prayer with the nine fruits of the Spirit that comes from Galatians five twenty-two twenty-three, and they are, it's nine of them. See, God is love. So the first one of the nine fruits of the Spirit, as I seal this prayer, is love, joy, peace, patience, goodness, gentleness, kindness, faith, and self-control. God, I speak all nine fruits of those spirits to every elected official in here, to the police officers, that we thank them for their service, to everyone in attendance. God, we thank you and we praise you, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen? Amen? Amen?
Stay seated. Just a few minutes. I would like to thank the Commissioners for a job well done. We needed that work done over there at the pantry. Y'all came through for us because, I'm telling you, that tree that we had over there, that tree was gonna hurt somebody, and I'm so glad y'all came, took a look at that thing, and we showed up thanking you. Seriously, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. I'm no doctor, but apparently that what most grateful part is, and I want to give all the kudos to our Commissioners. And we also been sending people who come through though, through that pantry, to tell you the same thing. They may not know all of you, but we got some of our people here with us tonight, but we just want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for what y'all did for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You would wish, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Naomi Junior, as we grew up calling you. These two people are worked tirelessly along with the volunteers at the Lincoln County Food Pantry. Thousands of pounds of food is given to the needy across this county every month. They do this without any pay and very little praise. We know that they are located on Five Tower Road at the old Georgia Forestry Commission Building that the county owns, and what they are talking about, as these Commissioners know, is over the last few weeks, some improvements are being made out there. A new roof has been put on the main office building. The tree has been removed since they were here last month, and we have some work that will be starting pretty soon, waiting on contractors to do some work on what I call is the first building. Out there where the old trucks used to be parked, I think we got some roof problems and some cosmetic and some stuff to do, and we plan to do some stuff in your building, Ms. Cobb, as far as the, some of the roof things that got wet after leaked, is to get that fixed and painted and get y'all fixed up, and we just want to say we appreciate everything that y'all do to help people have a full stomach at night when they go to bed, and we thank you for it. Item agenda item number four is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion that the minutes be approved as sent to you?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I second, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign motions carried. Agenda item five is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I second, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson. Need a discussion on the motion. Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign motions carried. Item number six, Departmental Report, six eight, Office of Emergency Services Director Casey Broom.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. You have my written report, and I would like to also add a little announcement. If y'all have any questions, I'll entertain them after the announcement. I'm proud to say that back in January, we hired two young folks to enter into a training program that paid them a salary to go through and become EMTs, and as of today, both of those folks have completed their EMT licensure process, and we're glad to have them on board as fully licensed EMTs. They are, we didn't let them rest. They're right into advanced EMT school. There goes that walk I was trying to tell you about right there. So I just wanted y'all to know that. This is something we started back in January. They've gotten their EMT and they're moving on, pursuing their advanced EMT, and we need several more like that. If y'all know anybody who's looking for employment, then we can offer them an opportunity. You have my report. I'll entertain any questions about reporting.
Any questions, Director Broom? There being none, thank you. Six P is Recreation Department Director Glazier.
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, you have my written report in front of you, note from the Advisory Board, you have a report.
Okay.
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Clyde.
I was just gonna say, we had the Loggers meet out there, Commissioner Henson kind of hit it up, but I just looked out there and noticed all those young people out there in the splash pad and playing tee balls, doing those things, and there's a lot going on. Looked awful organized, and a lot of people looked awful happy, so appreciate the work you're doing. Keep it up.
Any questions, Director Glazier? Commissioner Tankersley is mighty popular tonight.
That walk was looking, boy, I thought he really was.
Okay, thank you. Six C is the Finance Department Director Dawson.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have my printed reports. I don't have anything to add to those reports.
All right, you have the finance reports. Any questions, Director Dawson? If not, and you see some, you know how to get in touch with it. Six D, Public Works Department Director Seymour.
Chairman, Members of the Board, you have all of my written reports from public works. I don't have anything to add to those unless you have questions. I'd be more than happy to answer those this time.
Any questions, Director Seymour? I did notice we had twelve new single-family building permits issued last month.
Mm-hmm. That's me.
Eleven was the month before, and of course, January and February are a little slow, but altogether, we've had, I think, through last month, thirty?
Thirty, correct, yes.
Thirty new residential building permits. If everything goes good, then we'll...
And they're still coming in, Chairman. They're still coming in.
And if you looked at the total number of permits issued, it was seventy-one with additions and other, other things going on, so, so they're pretty busy over in that area. Any other questions, Director Seymour? If not, moving right along, we'll go to agenda item number seven is a public hearing for zoning applications. Is there a motion that we go into our public hearing?
Make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
The second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins. We go into Executive Session. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign motions carried, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir. On May the ninth of 2022, the Planting Commission-
Hold on just a minute.
You need to go into public hearing, not executive session.
What'd she say?
Public hearing, not executive session.
You said go into executive session.
Oh, I said executive session. We've never gone to executive session. Let, let that be corrected in the minutes that we're going into a public hearing, not executive session. Thank you. Same motion.
Yes, sir. On, on May the ninth of 2022, the Planting Commission heard the following request. The applicant was Jeff Sealy, map sixty-one A, parcel oh sixty-one, better known as twelve thirty-nine Dixie Lane, consisting of point nine-two acres, currently is on the R one. It is for, he had applied for a variance for an existing structure that ended up being torn down, and he is rebuilding that structure. Mr. Sealy asked for a two and, to be within two and a half foot of the property line. The Planting Commission makes the recommendation for approval to allow him to get within five feet of the property line, so this would be a five-foot setback variance, Mr. Chairman.
Is Mr. Sealy in the, here?
He is, yes, sir.
Hey, Mr. Sealy, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No. I asked for the two-foot-six, may-
Go to the podium, please.
I asked for the two-foot-six because that's where the old building was, and they ran eighty-five and said that's normal, and I'm willing to accept that, so, yes.
Anybody here that wants to address this is opposed to it. Anybody here that's in favor of it other than Mr. Sealy? Any questions from Members of the Board to Mr. Sealy? Is there a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Planting and Zoning Board?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign motions carried.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion that we come out of our public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign motions carried. We back in our regular commission meeting. Item number eight, Land Use Ordinances. Greg Grant, Mr. Grant, you know the rules. Five minutes, come to the podium.
Thank you. I think some of this is probably my fault for not being involved, but I feel like it's our Commissioners, it's, it's your job to make sure the public stays informed. I'm gonna read just the first paragraph off of the paper from November fourteenth, two thousand and two. Not a lot of people know this.
Two thousand, when?
Two thousand and two. "The first reading of the Revised Unified Development Ordinance and New Sign and Adult Entertainment Ordinance will be held at our regular meeting in Lincoln County." There's a lot of people in this county that don't realize we have an adult entertainment ordinance. I think that's something that people ought to have a choice in and say-so with, that kind of stuff. I really don't want to see a dirty bookstore in Lincoln County. Some of the zoning stuff that's gone on, as far as the enforcement of it, how it all went down, just made me uncomfortable. When you did this zoning back in oh-two, you sent out a map that had nothing but R one, R two, and R three on it, and it states in there that the major areas affected by the proposed changes have been indicated by R one, R two, and R three, that there was A one and A two and A three involved in this. Earlier, I showed Mr. Clyde a map, our county zoning map, that shows my property as being lakefront agriculture. I couldn't hit the lake with a thirty ought to six. If you go down to Chamberlain's Ferry Road and there's lakefront property, that's considered A two, interior agriculture. I'm just kind of wondering who did these maps and how this is gonna work. And then I didn't realize that when we went into this, that our, our zoning enforcement and stuff, how it would work. I mean, it takes time to see how something evolves. You don't just automatically see it right off the get-go. And it turned out it's more of a, a snitch-based system. We've got a county code enforcement officer, as far as I'm concerned, he should know our county codes like a police officer knows the law. If he sees something that he knows doesn't look right, he should investigate. He should check it out. There has been a couple incidences where it's been brought up. I had a friend of mine, for an example, that had a place down in Indian Cove. He didn't pull the permit. Robbie's familiar with this case. He didn't. He let his contractor handle it because his contractor was out of Carolina, and it was a, just a shed, rammed shed, boat shed, but it wasn't on slap, and he was under the impression because it wasn't on a permanent foundation, he didn't have to pull it from it. Well, anyway, he puts it in. Well, there's no big deal till the code man comes around, and I don't know if somebody complained because that's how I feel like it's being done. It's more of a snitch-based system because they're missing a lot of obvious stuff in the county. And they tell him, well, you got to replace that roof. So seventeen hundred dollars, he replaces the roof, but he brings up the other ones in the neighborhood that had the same roof that just made him remove. Nothing's ever been done. We'll look into that. First, he was told they were grandfathered in, and we went through Google Earth, we can tell that they were put in after the ordinance was implemented. So it just makes me wonder. That's like we're bringing up the Verizon Tower tonight. They have a hundred and eighty days from the day they're issued that permit. Now, you've helped the people, the residents of this county, speak to the power when it comes to this ordinance. I'm expecting you to do the same. We also have an AT&T tower that's supposed to be going on Borden-Nashmore Road. That is, that permit was issued on May thirteenth of last year, so I don't know how that one's gonna work out right now because I just, I think that's where they're marking the stakes at across from LW right now. You're more familiar with that than I am.
You're just as familiar and creative as I am.
Yeah. So I'm just wondering how, how this stuff is working out because it seems like certain people get more leeway than others. So I'll just leave it at that, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
I want to address the adult entertainment. I can't remember everything that happened in two thousand and two, but as well as I can remember and recollect, our legal counsel at that time was Mr. Ben Baron Ross, who deceased and served twenty-eight years in the Georgia Legislature in the House of Representatives. A lot of things that went in when we did that, after public hearings, that some people don't think was right, but it was. We did everything according to the law that we had to do to it. If we didn't, then we need to be sued and done. But as far as us making changes, we're not gonna change A three, and that's not gonna happen. R three, what is it, Robbie? A three of? That's, that's not gonna change where you live, and you bought that property in two thousand and five. Well, on the GQ public, it says two thousand and five, but I could stand to be corrected. But anyway, you know, it's been a long time ago, and planting and zoning is done for reasons. And naturally, it could be a few places it was done, and I think a lot of things, maybe some things were changed. We amended occasionally, or we add other things that we're gonna be doing in the next few months that we're gonna be adding. But you are in an A three zone, and no mobile home can be there. That lot was grandfathered in. If it was done today after two thousand and three, you'd have had two and a half acres, not one point seven-nine acres. So I don't, you, I'm talking now, you had your five minutes. But adult entertainment, it's very, very little about it, but it is something about it, and I don't think anybody could put an adult entertainment place in Lincoln County that would pass this commission if it wasn't in there. And we had nothing that addressed adult entertainment. We had nothing to go by, so they could come do it because we had no reason for them not to do it. So it's a reason that that's done. We had attorneys and people that do this every day to draw this ordinance up. They're still working on it. They probably does fifty percent of them in across this whole state, teaches most of the classes at the University of Georgia Colvin Institute. So I'll put up the county's ordinances wherever you want to take it. Now, do we hit every place that we need to hit? Probably not. We got one and a half people. We probably need five. Look at all the houses that's going on. How many trips do they make to each one of those houses? Yes, we got junk from some people's yards, and some people do things and don't get permits, and we catch them later. You know, I hope everybody understands, we fly this county now every three years, and we have gone back and looked. It just went online. You don't keep public, you look at it a good bit, and you can see some things, and we can tell what was that three years ago and what's that today. And we have gone and did some things, but every time you come to that microphone, you complain about Director Seymour and his department. Every time. Now, I'm satisfied that we probably make some mistakes, and I'm gonna tell you something, we're gonna make some more, because if you don't do nothing, you don't make no mistake. If you do something, you gonna make one. But we, we, you're here to talk about that ordinance every other month. The ordinance is not gonna change if you come every month. That part is not gonna change. So I don't know why you need to just keep continuing coming to talk about land code, but you have that right. Come and speak five minutes every time we meet. But I can tell you, you, it will not change your zoning from what it is today. Okay? All right, let's go to Verizon, item number nine. I have-
You're right, man.
I have asked Matt Hartley and Mr. Steve Watkins, now one of them, I think, represents the tile company, the real estate one is as other, but, but before y'all start speaking, as Mr. Grant said, we, we, I'm not here to bribe you, dank you, but I want you to understand where we are, and I don't know what we can do. We are not here to try to throw stumbling blocks at AT&T, T-Mobile, or Verizon, or any other group. We need your services. People of this camp want good sale cover. But we are made to look like idiots because we continually, as he said, he was right, to approve zoning for various cellular companies and mostly Verizon. We have some AT&T towers that we put up. They're not AT&T, I understand that. I'm called AT&T. Yours, not Verizon's. I know a company puts them up, and y'all need space on them. But when we come in and do that, and Verizon right now has, we have approved one at Loco, one down at Amity, one in double branches. That's, that's the only, that's the three that we got. Nothing has been done at Loco or Woodlong, not even a tower put up. Now, do we want to stop it? Can y'all never put one up? No, that's not what we want to do. But I have recently have gotten more phone calls over Verizon Towers, and I have little league at Recreation Department, and everybody gets mad at that when they're telling them, don't get a home run or get splashed. We were told in November that this tower was coming up. Then we were told, I think, January, February, it'd be on. March, maybe. Then we were told real clear, April, May twenty-ninth, wasn't it? April twenty-ninth, May twenty-ninth, that got it. Then it would be on. I've been down there, got out in the car, walked around the ridge of signs, the truckers up, lights blinking, and then I talked to y'all the other, last week, when I invited you to come and try, let's get some clarification for the, for the Lincoln Journal and for whoever watches this on YouTube, as to why we can't get a definite date for that to come on. And I understand the fact, I don't understand if I know what you told me, of the, of the, something's got to hit the tower in half, in the microwave dish or something. I don't know why that wasn't planned six months ago in November, that when this thing came on. Is it something that they, we all make mistakes, I just said that, but is it something that you didn't know that was gonna happen when you did this? You thought you was gonna be able to do it with broadband under the ground, or what? I just want you to state your name, who you with, whether you with Verizon or the tile company for the rest of it, and explain to us what's going on and what we can expect.
Okay. I can certainly do that. So my name is Matt Hartley, technically Matthew Hartley. I am with Verizon Wireless. I am a Verizon Wireless employee. I am the Georgia-Alabama Senior Real Estate Manager. So what my responsibility and what the team that works for me does is they handle all of the land acquisition modifications, establishment, on existing new towers, rooftops, easements, pretty much anything that's not encompassing a in-building system, stadium projects, things like that. So we've got, so my team for Georgia Open handles everything cell tower related, essentially from a real estate perspective. Brought up a lot of great points, and one of the things we've got, so one thing that I just kind of wanted to explain, and I'll, I'll touch on the microwave, the backhaul piece of that, and what's really, that's what's causing the delay with this project. But these, I fully understand the need that y'all have for self-coverage. I actually drove out to look at the tower myself prior to coming to the meeting, just to make sure that what I'm being told, you know, photos that I've seen, things like that, do match up. So the tower itself, it's on double branches. That tower is fully constructed. All of our antennas are on the top of the tower. As you mentioned, we've got, I mean, it's, it's ready to go. It's blinking light, generators, equipment cabinets on the ground, power is to the site. So we have everything there that we need, with the exception of a way to put that tower into our network. And so the way that we do that is we have a backhaul circuit that basically feeds in. So that backhaul circuit is what ties that tower, or any tower, into our network. So we've got switches all across the state. It routes it back in there, puts it in the, the big networks. And you kind of look at the, the backhaul circuits, kind of the highway- And you kind of look at the backhaul circuits, kind of the highway that takes you to the house. And then when you're in the house, you can talk to everybody kind of thing. So the problem that we've had, and again, the communication to you all has not been from us. It's been through our site acquisition companies that we started this project roughly early twenty-one. And so that's one of the reasons I wanted to come down. And I'm not saying this was not information that was provided to them. So it's nothing on Comsite who was communicating this to you all. This is, this was communicated by Verizon to Comsite. It was that communicating that. But I wanted to come down personally as Verizon to really address this and talk to you all about this. Because the way that we've got this, you mentioned that, you know, this is something that we should start six months roughly around the time when we do that. Actually, when we look at this, we refer to that backhaul circuit as a transfer. Let me not need to stop. I just keep going. So we refer to that backhaul circuit as that falls under our transport team. So that's our fiber, that's our microwave backhaul. That's basically the guys within Verizon to figure out how we're going to put these sites into the network. So my team works in the real estate. We get the land. We get the, everything that we need to be able to put the tower there. Our implementation construction teams get it built, transport gets fibered. I can, we've got a whole slew, but long story short, at the end of the day, network assurance comes out and we've got a site that's on there. So one of the things that we typically do with transport projects when we have these is there are several ways we can do that. It's either fiber, it's microwave. What we looked at for this particular site, based out of the site that's in Columbia County, that is a macro hub site for Verizon. So that's, that's a big, essentially a big beefy macro site that's got bandwidth to be able to take this, this traffic that's going to be on this site and then filter that through Columbia County. So that's going to involve us placing a microwave. So if you've seen it, it kind of looks like a big drum. We put one on the tower in Columbia County. We put one on this tower as well. So that is a microwave shot that goes between. And that's how the two towers talk to each other. That's how this tower is then put into our network. So the issues that we've been having is on the tower that's in Columbia County. So everything that we've had, you guys have been great, you know, permits, very understanding with, with everything that we've needed to do here. The problem is, is with the tower that we placed the microwave, so what I call the hop, the post hop essentially is what's coming from there, is that's not a Verizon owned tower. So that is one that we're going through a third party. So it's a, it's a fairly large tower company. It's one that we work with on a regular basis. We've got really three across the country that we do, the majority of our work with. So it's not a Verizon owned tower. So that, usually when we have situations like that, we've got typically what we put on these project timelines is about six months. Because of this site, this site is one of sixty-two sites that we've got across the two states in Georgia and Alabama that we have in our build plan. So that is, we get that project funded. We are all running towards the end, running towards the finish line to get this site on, on air. So I don't want you to, I don't want to leave here with y'all having the impression that we are not going to do anything with this tower. We have invested a considerable amount of money to get it in. The physical construction cost of the tower, the equipment cost, antennas, all that stuff. So we, we have got it there. What's going on is that microwave project is, is taking a lot longer than we typically would see. And usually when we start the transport projects, so we don't, probably shouldn't, but we do not start our transport projects at the same time as we start our physical construction. So the reason that we do that is because there's a lot of factors that go into that. Usually, once we get substantially complete with construction, then we'll kick off that project to begin the microwave work. So then that is us contacting the tower owner, going ahead and sending over applications of the equipment that we're going to install. And then there's a pretty involved process that goes along with that. It's all fairly standard. But there are instances and occasions when you run into situations like this where you've got some non-standard items that are causing some additional delay. And so a lot of that came down to nothing as far as the microwave equipment that we've got. But because of the space that's available on that tower and the height that we needed to be, we had to do some pretty extensive modification designs to the current mount that is on the antenna. And that's just taken a lot longer than we had. So we've got, there's currently equipment on there and we've essentially got to put our microwave dish, get everything built so that it's going to structurally be okay to stay there and cohabitate, I guess if you will, with that particular rad center or that center line of that antenna that's coming in. That has been considerably difficult. There's a lot of modeling that goes along with that. So we've got A and E firms. We've got structural firms that work on that. They have to first work on the design based on material that we can get. There were some issues with, you know, everybody's got that problem and we've all had to deal with it. It was a supply chain issue. So when we spec out certain parts, those aren't available for another, however long, then we have to kind of go back to the drawing board and say, okay, we'll substitute this angle iron U bolts, whatever, whatever the case may be. Again, that's a lot to say. That's what's causing the problem with this. I don't have a great answer for you on the communication that we've been providing to you all. That, that is a hundred percent on Verizon. Typically, what we've got within our systems, we've got, you know, kind of one main system that every different group can look at. And because this is, this is a twenty-twenty-two build plan year project, we tend to keep those to where we can make sure that we have crews allocated. So as soon as we are done with the real estate portion, because that microwave hop was on my team to get that completed, as soon as we're done with that, then we can pull the trigger on the construction team to actually go out and install the microwaves. And that's going to be them installing the microwave on the tower in Columbia County. They'll have a crew essentially on the one out here on double branches and they'll optimize one crew at the same time to get that done. So we keep those dates internally in our system fairly aggressive. So that is not something, so that's what we do because our vendors, when we're looking at that and we assign those projects, that keeps that high up on their radar. But that's not something, that's, that's more of an internal goal that we've got. And then, you know, us communicating that to you all and to the county is extremely optimistic. Because really what we do when we see a project is going to delay, we're only moving that data out internally in our system probably three to four weeks. Because again, we do not want that to fall off the radar. There's a lot of work going on in the telecommunications world right now. So we want to make sure that our crews are keeping that in their bucket. So as soon as we tell them to go, they can essentially go. So. Go ahead.
No, you finish. I asked you to come to.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm, I'm here at, you know, again, y'all, y'all allowed me to come. So I want, if you've got questions, you can interrupt them.
Do we have any date of when we think this tower will be up and running?
I do. So what I'm, so what I'm going to tell you tonight is right now, so I've got, and again, this is what, I would, at this point, I would rather give y'all an extremely conservative date versus something what we're targeting internally to be done. So right now, we've got, because again, we are going to have to, with the other tower company, we will have to wrap the agreement, get signatures and all that stuff done. So we've got our structural is finally coming back from that. We've got our CDs to come back from that. So that means our applications can be officially submitted. So that's all part of that application process. So really what we've got, we have been in discussions with, with the tower company nonstop about this project. So we have essentially all the pieces of the puzzle that we've got to get, we have now handed that over. So that's got to go through where you. Now, unfortunately with that is we also have to have that lease agreement wrapped through our system. So we've got certain parts that we can expedite internally and we are certainly do that every, every step we can. So our goal, my team's goal, is to get that out of real estate here by, you know, the middle of June essentially, which will be, I think, three, roughly three weeks from here. So that's going to put us to where we can say, okay, we've got this document. We have, we have a signed agreement. Our transport team, the equipment is here. It is sitting in a warehouse. It is waiting for us to go. The installation crews that we've got, they know about this. I've had several calls after, after we spoke last week to make sure that this is on everyone's radar to look at. So they're saying ideally, in an ideal world, they're looking at two weeks to get the antenna installed, have crews on both sites and then be able to optimize that because it's kind of a specific window and make sure that they're talking to each other correctly.
Do you think that tower will be operational in sixty days?
Yes, sir.
Forty-five days, ninety days?
What is, I do not have a calendar in front of me. I'm terrible at math. Sixty days would roughly put us end of July, July? Second week of July? Yes, sir. I feel very confident, second week of July, that we will have that tower up.
Let me ask this question, Director Seymour. The hundred and eighty days that's in our ordinances from the time we give approval for the rezoning or is that from the time when they start?
So, so the code says that they have a hundred and eighty days from the date the permit is issued.
Okay.
To have it fully operational.
Oh, we had that hundred and eighty days?
We have passed that hundred and eighty.
Where are we now? You got an idea with a hundred and ninety of it?
We're, we're about a hundred and ninety. Yeah, I think it was issued on November the twenties.
I don't think that it would benefit anybody for us to say, Bob, we're not going, we're not going to do it. I'll give you eighty days. Mr. Jackson, my question to you is, or to Director Seymour, we do have a hundred and eighty days. We have exceeded that hundred and eighty days. Would we need to tonight extend that sixty days from today? Or what? I'm asking the guys because I don't know.
So my understanding, and I sent the three code sections to Mr. Jackson as well. The way I interpret the code is after a hundred and eighty days, the director of planning and zoning can send a notice to the tower company of abandonment. In other words, it hasn't met the hundred and eighty day criteria. And you send them a notice that the tower has been abandoned because it's not operational. And then they have ninety days from the receipt of that letter to respond.
And we have not sent that letter?
I have not sent that letter, no, sir. I was waiting for Director.
Well, then we, we don't need to do anything except ask you to send that letter. Would that give us time, we think, to?
Yes, sir. It would. We, like I said, we have got, this is a very important project for us and several reasons. One, this is part of our big rural initiative from Verizon, to kind of start extending out our network through some of the more rural areas that we traditionally, past, you know, five years ago, we weren't doing that. So one, this is, this is part of that initiative to do that. So it's important from that front. But it's kind of, and not just saying that, I'm kind of thinking this is highly important. This is highly important to my team as well, just because I understand the frustrations. You all have approved the tower to be built. Really, everyone is looking, looking at the commissioners as to when is this tower going to be up and why is it not on? And again, y'all are kind of at the mercy of what you've been told and what we've been communicated. So one of the things is, I can assure you, I will be your, your new POC as far as communication, anything, updates, good, bad, the change going forward on this project. But we want this, this is, this is a huge project for us. And I, I really understand the frustration of the folks that look around here is you drive around, you see a cell tower, you look at your phone and you don't have any improvement in coverage. And not really, not everybody understands the microwave backhaul portion, component piece of this. Like I said, it's just, it's this extremely important project to Verizon as a whole.
Okay, let me speed this up. Did any of the commissioners have any questions, Mr. Harland?
Yes, sir, Mr. Jerome.
Mr. Collins?
Mr. Hartley, you represent Verizon, right?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me in twenty-five words or less why we don't have service? Everything you say is going by my little brain.
We have to have it. I will try and make this brief. I don't know if I can hit twenty-five. I know I've just said a whole lot.
Well, you can say thirty words. Just I want to understand when I walk out of here, what to tell people.
Yes, sir. So it's, it's essentially the link that puts that tower into our network is not up yet. Half of that link, which is going on the tower in Columbia County, that project has not completed yet. As soon as that project is complete, we'll be able to talk to double branches and optimize the way we're in business.
Thank you. That I understand. One's ready, one's not.
That's right.
Is that simple?
That is, that is correct, yes.
All right, be quiet. Let me just tell you, and I know you're aware of this. Everybody wants sale cover. Nobody wants a tower. So every time we vote to let Verizon or anybody else put a tower, to put one up, there are people sitting here saying, I don't want it. It's in my front yard. I can see a light flashing. They don't want it. I want coverage, but no test. And I have been told over the years that there's no way we can beat Verizon in court. But I can tell you, sir, going forward, when I'm asked to vote to put another tower up, I'm going to think long and hard if maybe I want to take them up in court. Because we expected this tower to be online sixty, ninety days ago. And now we're looking at sixty days more. It's frustrating. I mean, I pay Verizon two hundred and sixty-two dollars a month. So I am getting a little upset because I've been doing it for twenty-five years. I probably paid enough to build that tower. So I'm through fussing, but just please understand.
Yes, sir.
That I'm serious. The next time I have to vote for one, I'm going to think long and hard.
And that's, that's, we know, and that's one of the things that, that's part of the discussions that I've been having with, with our folks. And so just kind of elaborate a little bit on this and not to, again, take up the whole evening. I get kind of boring and I talk kind of kind of stuff. Really, when we look at these projects, we typically have an eighteen to twenty-four month outlook. So this, this particular project really started early twenty-twenty-one is when our traffic and our RF engineers looked at this area and said, hey, we're about to hit a point where we're going to, we're going to really be in a situation where we need to improve coverage out there. Even more folks are coming out. Well, there's several factors that drive to that. So these projects do start early. So a lot of times what we do from a real estate perspective is we try and go ahead and, because that's honestly, the real estate piece, that is a, that's a eighteen, eighteen to twenty-four month process from the time that we get where we need to put the tower, until we talk to landlords and find somebody that's willing to do this. We get this, all that process. So we try and get that done as quickly as possible. So I think that's one of the things that from a communication standpoint, we can make up a little clearer as far as specific build plans and when we get out there. Because ideally, we, we want to get these out of our bucket as quickly as possible so that they're sitting, ready as soon as we say we've got funding, we're adding it to the bill plan. There's no, there's no delays and we can have those up sooner than late. That's, that's just want to let you know, that is, yes.
Mr. Collins?
No, thank you, sir. And I hope you do understand my frustration.
Probably. I do.
Mr. Thank you, you have a question.
Mr. Hartley, did I understand you correctly saying that the fabrication of the antenna drum mount is still being done?
No, that is, that has been completed. That is what is taking, taking the longest time.
Has this, it's done? So we can go ahead and put that on this tower so you won't be waiting to do them? Or they got, both got to be done at the same time?
They're both going to be done at the same time. So it's not the same, it's not the, they're, the structural components, the piece parts, they're all, you know, I don't want to say that, you know, off the shelf stuff typically. But each, honestly, each mount is specific to the tower, to the equipment that's on that tower at every location. So there's, there's kind of some, I'll say somewhat air-coated standard mounts, but those are very rarely used. So branding towers, we don't run into issues like that, but for the most part, we do a mount mod design for every.
My question was, we wouldn't be getting ahead of the game if we went ahead and got that portion installed on our tower while we're waiting on the agreement.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we, so that is something that we, we can do. Now typically, our crews like to have that done because they're going to have to be onsite at the same time. So once they're actually out there, really it's the optimization that takes the, takes the lion's share of that. But that is something I will definitely take back and see if we can do that. Which is just trying to save two trips to that one, to the double branches site essentially. But that, that puts us much closer, so.
Mr. Thank you. Mr. Clyde?
Mr. Tony, I was just going to ask to make sure I understand, or if I heard was correct. You saying about July the fifteenth or so, you feel pretty confident we're going to be in business?
Yeah, I do. And we're, we'll do everything we can to beat that. But again, at this point, I don't want to, I do not want to be too. I do not want to be too, um, optimistic just because that does not work in our favor up to this point, so. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm left.
Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, I guess I want to make a statement. Um, I'm also a Horizon customer. And I, I, I'm going on thirty years now. In fact, it might already be thirty years. Of course, at the time, it wasn't Horizon. It was Air Touch. I think Verizon ended up buying Air Touch at some point in time. Uh, and for what Commissioner Collins said, my bill's five hundred dollars every month. Uh, and I'm to the point of looking at something else because of this right here. Uh, I mean, it, it frustrates me to know, and everybody I talk to with Horizon up in this area is in the same boat. It don't matter whether you go here or Wilkes County or Old York County. It's a problem everywhere. We've got options now that we didn't have when I got my first telephone. Uh, and I think y'all need to understand that. So this is important. But my question, I guess my, my question is, is a hundred and eighty days reasonable uh, in our ordinance? Is that something we need to look at changing? Should you be able to do it that way?
Again, that, from our standpoint, you know, once we, once we get to the, once we've got all the approvals and everything like that, the, the physical construction of the tower itself, that's honestly, once we get to that point, that's usually fairly quick. Because by the time we, we have boots on the ground, that steel's been ordered, that tower's been ordered. So the time on, the time on site for that, to build that piece, the physical construction of that is, I, I, I'm not in the construction business, but that is, that is relatively shoot. So as far as having the tower constructed, equipment and everything like that on, that's a very realistic timeframe. What you, what you run into is just the difference in how that back off circuit's gonna come in. So our particular situation for this tower is microwave. Another tower that we do, maybe five, I think maybe five gets closer that we can get in. So there's, it, it's, I'd just say, it, it depends on that. Um, it's not a rock solid yes or, yes or no.
Okay, let me, let me, let me do this, Commissioner Henderson, I think Director Seymour. When that hundred and eighty days was put in, that, that number came from somebody saying that that was, that that was adequate time. And we, we went to somebody and asked them, somebody did, I guess, before I got back there, but, but y'all went, I, I remember y'all telling us that you talked to somebody and a hundred and eighty days is what they.
Correct. That's kind of the industry standard, yes.
That's industry standard.
Yeah, and, and to be a little clear, it's, it's, um, it's a complex thing, okay? So, so we've been dealing with three different people, okay? Three different companies. So Comm Site is the acquisition group. So they package this thing together and say, this is a good site. They get it through planning and zoning, and then they hand it off to a construction company that actually owns the tower, okay? I don't, I don't believe that Horizon actually owns this tower. It's a, it may be a subsidiary of Horizon.
Well, so, um, so what we do with that in that situation, so Comm Site is the, the site acquisition company. So they, we hire sites, so they are working for us. We, we tell them that this is where we want to go. And, and as you said, they put that package together, they get everything done with that. So as we're doing that, when we sign the lease with the landowner, um, that is a Horizon signed lease. And then what we do is we have a, basically we call it a build suit program where we have tower companies that then we have agreements with them where they build the towers. So they are able to sublease on the towers, but we get, you know, rent abatements and things like that. So we do all the upfront work. They build it, they maintain it, they physically have it, there's contractual application.
So you don't actually own the tower. You're leasing space from the tower?
So we are, yes, they, we, we turn the tower to them, they lease space back to us, and it's just, that's how the deal is structured.
So, so basically, there's three, there's three, you know, companies involved. There's a, there's a site acquisition, there's a tower company, and then there's the user. And, and they can sublease, the tower company can sublease to A T and T or, you know, to co-locate on that same tower or something.
Okay, let me, let me, we've been, we have, and I, we, we got a dinner meeting with the people here. Wow, we're supposed to be too much running late, but, um, we have been talking about the double branches type. While we here, let's hit on Loco and Amity. What, we have, are they in compliance with us now? We need to do something different.
So, so the, 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 um, Loco site has passed its, um, one year mark.
So is I. They would have to come back for all three rezonations to go.
That, that is correct.
Okay.
The Amity site is still in play. It's, it's less than a year. However, this board, uh, in its motion decided not to allow me to issue a permit until this site was up in operation. So even though it's still in play, I can't issue a permit until this site is operational.
All right, well, let me ask you this. Have they, have they came to you asking for the permit yet?
They have not.
So we haven't had to exercise that from the have.
That is correct. They, they're ready to go. Um, and, and I had a conversa, I had a conversation with, um, I think it's a different, it's Hartley. Yes, Hartley. Uh, I had a conversation, they didn't ask me for the permit, but they asked me, you know, when we would be able to issue, and I told them as soon as this one was operational. So they haven't, they haven't requested a permit.
So now you can tell them sixty days if this is in operation?
Don't tell them nothing.
Okay.
Now, while we're talking, I will address the A T and T tower too, real quick. Um, A T and T tower on, on Ashmore Garden Road, uh, was issued a building permit. However, we have withdrawn the permit because they are redesigning the footings. Originally, it had three separate concrete pad footings for the legs of the tower. Gone back and they're redesigning that footing, and then they will resubmit for a building permit. So right now, they're kind of.
A building permit to build a tower?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So they have with, they have changed that in the design of the tower then?
The, the footing of the tower. The tower is still the same.
Footing of the tower.
Correct. The tower will still be a lattice type tower that you all through. The footing is actually being redesigned.
So they have come to us and your office knows what's going on there?
That is correct.
They got time?
That is correct.
All right, let me be sure now. Loco is gone beyond its time. It's over. They'd have to come back to us. Amity?
Is waiting on the completion of this tower to be able to pull a permit.
And you think then they'll be ready to go with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, any other questions? If not, I appreciate y'all taking the time.
I really appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Watkins, thank you too for coming. All right, we're gonna move it on here now. I know. Item number ten, capital purchases, Lincoln County Sheriff's Office vest. Captain Taylor, you got one minute? Most of this, we know what it is.
Chairman and County Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity again to address y'all. Um, I, I promise you I will not take long, uh, as a previous person before me. Uh, what we're looking at for the Sheriff's Office is, uh, purchasing ten vests. Uh, they're enhanced, uh, three A plus vests, bulletproof. Uh, they're also slash and stab proof and also taser proof. Uh, also with that order will be, uh, giving, uh, name tags for each of the vests. Um, and just to give you a little background on the vests, these vests are gonna be good for five years. Uh, and the reason that we waited, uh, so long in this budget cycle was that we wanted to make sure our staff was in place. Uh, that way we're not spending excess, excess money. We want to make sure everybody's covered. Um, I did save the commission a little bit of money. I got mine two years ago, so we saved money on fat back. So we're good.
You save with no money, call a little more to build that one.
But, uh, just to give you a little background, uh, these vests are good, um.
Captain Taylor, I think that we, I think that we know all about it really.
Okay.
Not to cut you short, but we spent time on this last week at our work session. I think what, what you're asking us to do is to purchase ten tactical uniform style vests.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it was in the capital budget of the general fund, and you are asking for seven thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars?
Yes, sir.
I think it was a little more than that put into budget. Is that correct? So we under budget?
Yes, sir.
We, I, we're asking for a motion to approve this for the general fund's capital budget, the amount of seven thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And, um, we just need a motion to approve it.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So I second. Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Collins?
Now, the price here is seven thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
That's what I got.
All right, but the invoice we got in back for the quote is seven thousand five hundred and sixty-five.
They, they added a credit card fee on there, and we got them to take that off.
Okay.
Um, because we'll be, we'll be using different form of method to payment it.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor, the most living on saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, most is carried. Thank you, Captain Taylor, for enduring this hour with us.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Georgia Trauma Commission Grant Director Broom, we know a lot about it, so make it quick.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, as we discussed in the work session, we are eligible for a four thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollar, fifty-two cent grant from the Georgia Trauma Commission, uh, for, uh, to improve trauma care in Lincoln County. I'm requesting a motion tonight to apply for and also for the commission to accept the funds once we receive it.
Okay, we need a motion to allow Director Broom to apply for this grant, I think it's what? One eighteen hundred and thirty-five dollars? No.
No, sir.
I'm wrong.
Four thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-two cents.
Fifty-two cents, I got it. And to sign for the grant application, to accept the grant when, if we.
And accept the funds when they come, and Mr. Ben said that can be one motion.
Madam Clerk, you got all that?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Director Glaze, I don't think we got to take a long time on this, because I think we, we know what we.
We're here on the, um.
Did we discuss this longer than anything else last week?
Yes, sir. The service, uh, animal policy, policy, uh, which will be code thirty dash four dash two. We're here trying to, um, ban any dogs on recreation premises other than service dog.
Well, this did, this does say, um, I think we changed this, and this, this is not just the recreation complex now. It becomes all Lincoln County government properties. Is that correct?
Correct.
We have policies and, um, I guess we need maybe, Director Walton, we might need to put this on the website for a little while. People get used to it. We're gonna have a department head meeting again. Maybe we might call it, not wait till next month. Where every department will have this policy, and we have a application, and we need to do it. So I'd like for the motion to read if, to read that, um, that we approve this policy and that we've put it into effect uh, maybe July the first, beginning of our new fiscal year, to give us time to get people aware of it, the signs made up, and this type of thing. Um, any other questions to him? Is there a motion that we adopt the service animal policy under the American Disabilities Act for Lincoln County government property along with the, um, service animal registration form application?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? For those that are listening, be aware, we did discuss this for a pretty good while last week. We know what's in it. We put it on the website. All in favor, the most lived, known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, most is carried. Item number thirteen, thank you, Director Glaze, shade structure. At the Recreation Department Director Glaze is still up here.
I'm here to ask for approval.
Now, I see why I was Development Authority's. We got a board member from the Development Authority and Director McNeese is here.
The shade structure for the recreation park for the jumping pillow, Ms. Christine McNeese, um, is beginning focus. And they're willing to handle that for, for us, donate it.
We haven't gotten a, a, um,
She's still.
Confirmed number yet, do we? Okay, what, what we are doing, if, if we can, Mr. Jackson, is we need a motion to accept the monies from the Development Authority to put the shade over the jumping pad and all, the benches at the splash pad, whatever they may be, and we, we know that when it happens. But we need to go ahead and get that on record where we, if they do that, we will accept it.
Yes, sir.
Because this is something that they are willing to buy and, and to help us do. Any, is there a motion that we accept this from the Development Authority?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Tankersley. Any discussion on the motion?
Would they like to say anything?
Pardon me?
Would they like to say anything?
Would you like to say anything? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, most is carried. And we do thank y'all, though, because we, um, we, we can take all we can get. Item fourteen, return to work policy. This has been brought to the commission at the work session. Clerk McKellum?
Yes, sir. I'd like to ask y'all to adopt the return to work policy. It is a new policy that is required by A C C G for the, um, safety grant that Director Broom is, is applying for. It is the standard return to work policy, and Attorney Jackson has already reviewed.
Okay, we agreed to take that last paragraph out. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We familiar with it. Is there a motion that we approve the return to work policy?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Tankersley. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Item fifteen is F Y twenty-two budget revisions, Director Darce.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, what we're asking is, uh, and this is a budget neutral request. We're just simply asking to move the, uh, payroll for, uh, several employees uh, to different departments so it does not change the actual budget. We need to move an employee from the road department to the water department where he currently works. We just want to move the salary for that employee from one department to another department. And we also need to move, um, an employee from the county shop and another employee from the recreation department into the general administration budget. Those two employees, um, are doing buildings and groundwork, and we just want to put them in the departments where they're actually working.
And we will have a line item in general, and we, I've asked you to do a, a whole line item budget for buildings and grounds.
Yes, sir, we are doing.
That would include Martha and Darce and everybody. We've not had a line item in the budget for building and grounds, but we all go do that and shift all this off. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And, and the reason we're asking the board to do this is board policy allows the chairman to make, uh, interdepartmental moves for everything except for payroll. Payroll always has to come back to the board to move payroll, even if it's budget neutral.
I think we ought to include in that same motion, uh, Ms. Paul Loewen, and, and, oh, late, I can't think of my name.
Martha.
They are, they are down to that general administration thing too, and it works for building grounds. I think we ought to put them all in that budget.
So the motion would read, would read to create a buildings and grounds budget and move those employees.
Then you'd have those four employees.
We need two motions now, Mr. Chairman.
Got to have a separate motion for that?
We, we need a motion to move, uh, because we're gonna create a new budget item. So we need a motion to move, uh, the road department employee into the water department. That would be one.
All right, I got it. Let's do that one now.
All right.
There are motions that we move a, a position from the road department to the water department.
I made the motion. I made that change.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, most is carried. And the second motion?
Second motion would be to create a buildings and grounds budget, move all of the existing employees in general administration, and plus the two positions we need to move, one from road department and one from recreation into that.
Okay, I got it. Clerk McKellum, you got it?
Yes.
Is there a motion that we make these moves and create the new budget?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion?
Chairman.
Commissioner Tankersley?
This still is budget neutral.
It's, it's budget neutral. Just move the payroll from one to another. Yes, sir.
Oh, but we're not spending no more money. Commissioner Henderson, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was thinking you said that you were gonna move all of the general admin.
I was thinking, you say that you were gonna move all of the general admin.
So in, in the general administration, all of the employees there are building and grounds, so it's, so those are the only employees in there, so we're just moving them into the, the new budget, yes, sir.
Just clean it up, we paying them out of several different budgets, and clean it up and move them over into one new line item budget. Okay, all in favor, most living, Commissioner Tankersley?
All opposed.
Oh, all in favor, most living, don't say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, most is carried. Item number sixteen is health insurance quote, and I think we got good news, Director Doss.
Uh, yes, sir, Chairman and Commissioners, uh, our broker, uh, uh, Mike McCombs, uh, worked very diligently with our current carrier, and, uh, they had asked, our carrier proposed an eight percent increase, um, and, uh, Mr. McCombs has got them to agree to renew us again for a zero percent increase for this year. And so I'm asking the board to renew our, our, uh, our health insurance contract starting July one with Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield, with no change in our plan and no increase in our rate.
Okay, he, he saved his eight percent since last week, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion is, is to stay with the current health plan coverage, and I just want to, I just want for the record, though, that the, that the cost of this is three hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred dollars that the county's got to, that the county's got to pay, and then the, uh, employees pay, I got it somewhere, but they.
Forty-nine thousand three hundred and two dollars.
Right at fifty-five, they pay about forty, almost fifty thousand dollars of their health insurance, and the county contributes three hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred dollars.
And that, that phone call by Mr. McCombs saved us thirty-four thousand dollars to save the county. That's big.
That's good.
Thank y'all.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor, most living, don't say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, most is carried. You'd like to say something, Commissioner? That one, I saw you looking, thinking. Item seventeen, standard allowance ARP funds, Director Doss.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, as, uh, we discussed at the work session, I am asking the board to, um, approve, uh, approve, using the standard allowance for revenue replacement, uh, as allowed by the, uh, Treasury Department for our, uh, coronavirus funds, our American Rescue Funds, uh, what that would do is that would allow us to move, uh, the balance of our dispersment, which is one million two hundred and forty-six thousand thirty-five dollars, um, into the general fund and use them for any governmental purpose. Uh, the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, as well as the National Association of County Commissioners, is recommending to all counties, uh, large and small, that they take the standard allowance, and it just makes it easier for governments to be able to use these funds. Um, as I mentioned in the thing, there are three, four things that we can't do with the funds. We can't save them, we have to spend them by the twenty-sixth, by December of twenty twenty-six. We can't use them to, uh, pay down debt, we cannot use them to, uh, fund our retirement system, and there was something else, I forgot what the other ones, but those were the three main things that we can't.
Tax reduction, was it tax?
Oh, tax reduction, thank you, sir, we can't use it to reduce taxes. So these funds will have to be spent, but it will just make it easier for us to spend them.
Okay, and again, this was discussed, and, and explained to us real good, in depth at the work sessions, is there a motion, we accept Director Day, Director Doss?
I made the motion.
Got a second.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, we're saying aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, you got all that, hey?
Yes, sir.
Vote pass. Item number eighteen is wastewater contractor agreement with the city, we can make this one quick, too. This one, we went over this and we understand it, and we know what it is, it's a quick update to the sewer sales agreement we have with the city, you wanna hit it from, from like, Mr. Collins, man, you got twenty-five words.
Um, this is a, a revision to the current sales agreement that we, uh, have currently today that deals with some stuff, uh, like the blackjack sewer system that has been, um, up and running for quite some time, and we're cleaning it up, uh, making it a little better for both parties, a little clearer, um, we went over all of the, um, uh, the points of interest in the work session, uh, the city approved it last Monday, and so we bring it to this commission tonight for approval from the commission.
Is there a motion that we accept, that we approve the sewer sales agreement with the city?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor, most living, don't say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, most is carried. Item nineteen, paving Gilobo and Nathania Farm Road, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, um, we did some, uh, uh, repairs to Gilobo and to Nathania Farm Road, uh, several months back, um, and so those areas have been, um, repaired and have, uh, actual crush and run in them, we lowered them to sit a couple months, uh, to settle before we did any paving, so I come, uh, to the board tonight to get approval to do the paving portion of this project, um, for a total of one, uh, one hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh, these prices, as we talked about in the work session, have stayed the same, uh, they did not go up, um, so I asked for approval for this amount, uh, to do the repairs, we will wait until after school gets out, I believe, the end of next week, uh, before we do this, to keep from interfering with bus routes and those things, but I asked approval for one hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars from this board to make those repairs.
Director Seymour, where you gonna get that money?
It, it is gonna come from T-Swaps, Chairman.
Not L-Meg.
Not L-Meg.
Okay. All right, one hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars for Gilobo and Nathania Farm Road for some paving, um, it'd be paid from T-Swaps, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Tankersley. He already spoke, you just didn't hear.
I know.
Any discussion on the motion?
Just to, I think, if I remember right, this is patching these roads, it's not a complete repave. It is not a complete repave, however, there are some sections, we're gonna have to do some extended paving, where we've got some patches that are, you know, from me to you in between, that we'll, instead of having bump, 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 we'll, we'll do that, but it is not a complete repave, no, sir.
It's, it's about a mile, a little bit, isn't it?
Total, it's, it's right out of a mile.
It's a pretty good bit, it's, it's a good bit.
Yes, sir.
Basically, after you pass, where you turn to go to that first, first other route, you cross the creek, it's pretty much the rest of the way down, and a lot of circle on, what do they call it, lake circle?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, most living, don't say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Thank you, Director Seymour, board appointments. Um, I have one to the Department of Family and Children's Services, Elizabeth Arthur has served, and she's willing to continue to serve, so I'd like to recommend that we appoint, and, uh, if, if, if my at-large position, reappoint Elizabeth Arthur back to a five-year term to the Department of Family and Children's Services Board, I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Uh, twenty D, planning and zoning, District Three, Commissioner Clyde?
Yes, sir, I spoke, uh, to Cole McKinnon, and he's agreed, sir, to the end of the year, and he'll, we, it takes place, so.
Okay.
I make the motion, we approve him.
I don't know that we have to approve it, we can just, since you know it, and Mr. Tankersley knows it, then we can just let him continue to serve till the end of the year.
Yes, sir.
Glad he was willing to do that, we got a plaque for him to be a year old. Okay, District Four, Commissioner Tankersley, um, I guess you, we stand in the same situation, don't we, that he would stay, so those people will stay until, we'll address that in January. And for those listening, the reason for that is, is commission district lines have changed, and January they will go into effect. Uh, twenty C, Recreation Department, District Three, Commissioner Clyde?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, Scott Partridge agreed to serve another term, and, uh, I make the motion, we approve that.
Have a second to reappoint Commissioner, I mean, uh, Scott Partridge, that's second.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Clyde, second by Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor, most living, don't say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. District Four, Commissioner Tankersley.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Kennerick Charles has agreed to serve another term, I would make that motion that we reaffirm him.
Yeah, well, motion that we reappoint Mr. Charles to the Recreation, Recreation Board Representative, District Four, that's second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor, most living, don't say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. I guess that suits Director Glaze, too, he kept the same vote. All right, twenty D is the Board of Tax Assessors, uh, District Two is not gonna be done, we are found out, she's, he's got another year, somebody.